We can call the Wednesday, April 5th, 2023 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting to order. Can I go ahead and have a roll call, please?
Daniel Henderson. Michael Widmer.
I'm present.
Bill Haug. Michael Drinkwater. John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Casey Mensah. Chris Melton. Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright. Kara Stealyn. We have a quorum.
All right, very good. That takes us on to item number two, public comments. Are there any public comments?
I have none.
All right, moving right along to item number three, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Widmer will second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, next item is NNWPC Resolution 23-02, a resolution of appreciation for the service of John Zimmerman as a commissioner of the NNWPC. Before we get started with reading the resolution, is there any public comment on this item? No, okay, very good. With that then, Mr. Zimmerman, if you wouldn't mind standing up at the podium, I appreciate that, thank you very much. So whereas John Zimmerman was appointed to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission on June 3rd, 2016, representing the Truckee Meadows Water Authority for over six years, and whereas John grew up a native Nevadan enjoying and respecting the land and its resources since his childhood, and whereas John fostered positive partnerships among the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission member agencies, improving water resource planning at the regional level, and whereas John ensured that water resources were protected and maintained for Tamwah's customers today and in the future, and whereas John always provided superior legal expertise to ensure the right decisions were being made, and whereas John maintained high standards of professional conduct, carrying out his duties with integrity and dedication, and whereas the staff and members of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission enjoyed working with John due to his level-headed leadership, common sense, and support of staff, now therefore it is resolved that the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission hereby extends its sincere appreciation to John Zimmerman for serving on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission and for his countless hours of public service on behalf of the citizens of the Truckee Meadows of the Truckee Meadows. So, Mr. Zimmerman, thank you very much. We do have a little gift for you as well, and I'll get that when we get this all taken care of, but are there any comments for Mr. Zimmerman from anybody on the board? Mr. Flansburgh.
John, it's been a pleasure working with you here on the board. I think this is where we probably first were introduced to one another and for all the collaborations with Tamwah. And so appreciate your service here and appreciate you and your position that you are in at Tamwah. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else? I'd like to echo those comments, and I'd also like to add in that unfortunately we are losing two Johns from our commission today, which is probably going to make it a lot easier for the next chair.
One you really needed.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I don't know if you want to address us in any way.
Sure, I don't think I deserve this recognition, definitely not as much as the John behind me, but I appreciate it. Over the years, getting to know every one of you, I mean, this is a very important commission for this region with water resources, and definitely my replacement is a much better water resource person than I am, Kara Stealyn, so she'll do a great job and has been doing a great job here and at Tamwah. But no, I appreciate it and just keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So this is an action item. I'll take a motion. Mr. Flansburgh?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any. Great, thank you very much. That takes us on to item number five, which is the NNWPC Resolution 23-03, resolution for Mr. Martini. So, Mr. Martini, if you wouldn't mind standing up there and taking this little bit of abuse from us.
Thank you.
So whereas John Martini was appointed to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission on September 23rd, 2014, representing the City of Sparks for over nine years, and whereas John provided service to the City of Sparks and its provides service to the City of Sparks and its constituents for more than 20 years in roles ranging from city engineer, community services director, and assistant city manager, and whereas John fostered key partnerships among the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission member agencies to manage water resources, water resource planning at the regional level, and whereas John was instrumental in integrating the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility into the regional water management framework, and whereas John provided guidance and leadership to the commission serving as both chair and vice chair during his appointment, and whereas John maintained high standards of professional conduct, carrying out his duties with integrity and dedication, and whereas the staff and members of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission enjoyed working with John due to his affable nature, guidance, and expertise, now therefore be it resolved that the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission hereby extends its sincere appreciation to John Martini for serving on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission and for his countless hours of public service on behalf of the citizens of Truckee Meadows. So congratulations, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any comments for Mr. Martini? Mr. Flansburgh?
I can't resist. So, John, you and I have worked together for a few minutes. So it's been a pleasure to have you here on this commission. I know that you are, your replacement will represent Sparks in a great manner, but thank you for your service. Thank you for the dedication that you've had for the water in our region and for just being a great partner and collaborator. So very much appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flansburgh.
Mr. Drinkwater.
I tread lightly because I still work for you, but no, it's been a lot of fun working with you here, particularly your sense of humor I've enjoyed, so that I will, I'll do my best to carry on with your affable nature, I think is the language that Birgit put in the, I think you drafted that, yes, because none of us would come up with that, but I agree with it and I will do my best to fill your very large shoes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
Anybody else? All right, John, thank you. Thank you for your guidance over the years. I really appreciate it, and I, I'm not going to let you get away, you know, from this planning commission without asking you a bunch of questions at some point in the future, so, you know, we'll draw you back in when necessary.
I'll look forward to it, Dave. Thank you.
Anything else from your seat?
Absolutely. I, I want to thank you all. I can't believe nine years went by that fast. It has been a pleasure to sit on this commission mainly because of the quality of everyone who's up there today. I think often as public leaders and civil servants, you know, we take some criticism that we can't cross boundaries and we can't work together, and this is one of the committees that I've always pointed to, to say, if you want to see cooperation and if you want to see progress, come to this committee and just watch the hard work that gets done. It's fun for me to look back on where the plan was nine years ago versus all the hard work and improvements to arrive at the plan we just approved not that long ago. I have all the confidence in the world that it will continue to get better because of the leadership of the people that are sitting in those chairs up here. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your time and leadership and hard work, and it was a pleasure. And Mr. Solero, if you ever need to call me, I'll look forward to the phone call. So thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. With that, I will take a motion.
Move to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Just a minute, I'll get some paperwork taken care of, and we'll get you some gift cards, and then you can be on your merry way if you'd like. So that takes us on to item number six, I believe. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Kim Rigdon, for the record, I included item six for informational purposes and primarily to welcome Casey Mensah to our board, who wasn't able to attend today, but Casey Mensah is our new Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility member position on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, so I wanted to welcome him aboard. I also know that Commissioner Stealyn is new and we've had some changes, and so I wanted to present a staff report that was, you were able to look through it and see who holds what positions and how those positions compose the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. So for the public certification and for the folks in the room, there are seven ex officio members that are automatically appointed to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission by virtue of their position as a public work director, general manager, or designee of one of those, and those positions are the City of Reno, City of Sparks, Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, there's two positions there, the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and Sun Valley General Improvement District. We have one Pyramid Lake Pryute Tribe representative. We have two WRWC-appointed positions. One is a public-at-large position and one is a domestic well representative. We have one appointed by the Washoe County Conservation District and one Truckee River Flood Management Authority position that was added to the commission as an appointment by the Western Regional Water Commission a few years back. The list of those positions are in there, so we have 12 voting members on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, and with that, I will turn the time back over to you, Chairman, and allow you to welcome Casey. I was going to do a welcome for Casey, but he's not here, so I apologize.
No, no, that's all right. No, I think there's good information in there. Are there any questions from any of the members here on this item, just kind of what comprises the, the board, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission? Yes, sir, Mr. Flansburgh?
I'll just add one correction. So I'm the Regional Infrastructure Administrator for the City of Reno, and I am Kari Koskis, designee.
Very good. Yes, sir.
My apologies.
If I may just offer, Mr. Mensah's in a training class that was long scheduled, and with our changes in responsibility, it was just not, he is not, he would very much like to be here, but alas, we determined that we didn't want to try to reschedule that training, so he, with his apologies.
Sorry, we'll, we'll excuse him from his first meeting.
Yeah.
No problem. All right, not seeing any other questions on that item. Let's move on to item number seven, which is the nomination and election of chair and vice chair of the Northern Water, Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Ms. Rigdon, do you have anything to jump in?
I just wanted to put up on the screen that the term is from April 5th, sorry, Kim Rigdon, for the record, the term is from April 5th to March 31st, 2024. The chair position rotates annually. Most of the members are aware of the position, the requirement of the act for that chair, chair position to rotate annually. The vice chair does not have that same requirement, and the non-eligible positions are listed up on the screen primarily because they've already served twice and we're in that position on the rotation. So, Chairman, you can take over.
Very, very good. Appreciate that. With that, just very briefly, do we have any public comment on this item? Get that out of the way. Perfect, thank you very much. And so we, we need a nomination for chair and vice chair from this board. And, yes, Mr. Drinkwater.
I'm sorry, do me a catch-up there, Mr. Chair.
That's fine, no problem.
I move to nominate Mr. Widmer as become the chair of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission for the upcoming year, and Mr. Flansburgh to be the vice chair.
I will second that. Okay. Is there any other discussion on this, this item? All right, seeing none. Did those nominees accept the nominations? I should throw that out there, you know, prior to. Well, you know, it's just a nice thing to ask.
Yes, I do.
Perfect.
Let's go.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any. Here's your gavel. Here's your item, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take mine, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, I'm privileged. I appreciate your trust in me. I just recall back in the early 1990s that I was roped into being a co-author of the first regional water plan, and that goes back a ways, so I'm feeling all of my 70 years old here. But thank again, thank you again for your trust in me. So apparently we're going to move on to item number eight, approval of the minutes from the March 1st, 2023 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Solero?
Second. Flansburgh?
Any comments? Any public comment? So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, unanimous decision. Number, number nine is the presentation and report on the Western Regional Water Commission and Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission purified water facility site visits. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Widmer and members of the commission. I just wanted to double-check with our tech that we have Mark Milan with Data Instincts on Zoom. I see everything.
I believe I am on, if you can hear me.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
We're, it looks like, do we have visual on Zoom? I'll wait a minute until we make sure we have that. Okay, great. All right, there we go. So for those of you who are not familiar with Mark Milan, he's pretty well-renowned at this point with our One Water Nevada group. Mark Milan is the principal of Data Instincts, and he's under contract with the Western Regional Water Commission to develop and implement a regional One Water Nevada communication plan to assist all the agencies with the outreach on recycled water investigations and projects in the community. So with that, Mark is going to be doing the first part of the presentation, so I'll turn the time over to you, Mark.
Great, thank you, Kim, and thank you, new chair and commission, commission for having me. I appreciate it very much. And, Kim, I'm not able to see what slide you're on, so, oh, there we go, that works. So first, I want to take a minute just for those who may be new, to explain a little bit about One Water Nevada. I know that many of you in the room there have participated in its formation in these last five years. It's a collaborative effort of the regional agencies exploring a comprehensive resource management approach to extending the resiliency and sustainability of existing local water supply. Next slide, please. Now, there is a website where a lot of information resides on One Water Nevada and the various studies that are underway. It also has information for the public to better understand the use of recycled water and other places where it's used, from all the way from Purple Pipe to the A-plus status where it could be used to augment drinking water supplies. And also, this website contains information on schedules and different things occurring on these various projects. And the next slide, please. The, really important for those who may be new to some of the studies, particularly around A-plus water, is that it retains, it contains all the various studies that have occurred in the past up to the present. And I work closely with John Enlow and Kim and John's staff on keeping this website current. We are making some updates just in the next couple of weeks here as we move toward Smart About Water on May 6th. So I want to take a minute now and talk about the recent tours. So next slide, please. This presented an opportunity to have different, the different boards and elected members on the Western Regional Water Commission, as well as staff and other water planners, to visit various facilities to, to gain a better understanding about what it takes to develop these sites, what kinds of elements are included in them, and to learn what are the benefits to the communities that they serve. So you can see, we did two tours, one in January, another in February. I think we had almost 20 people on the 19th and in '22 in February for that tour, and you can see here on this slide the various people who attended. Next slide, please. This is a shot at Orange County Water District, and it was interesting, I think, for all the different people who participated in this tour to hear from the various people involved in the project and also to see firsthand the treatment train used to purify water there, and most importantly was being able to taste the water afterward. I think everybody on, who was on that tour tasted the water when we got toward the end there. Next slide, please. Probably one of the most valuable parts of all these visits that we had was hearing from the different general managers and board members of these facilities firsthand, and they were very open with us about sharing the lessons learned as they moved toward developing these projects, raising the funds, what were some of the political challenges for them, as well as keeping the public informed as these projects evolved. And I think that those who participated in the tour really got a lot out of these interactions with these various leaders of these projects. Next slide, please. One of the most valuable things, especially from my perspective, was learning what kinds of things are working well in communicating with the public. And this particular site, the Albert Robles Center, was like visiting Disneyland. It had really interesting, interactive informational tools so that no matter your age, from four to 90 years old, you could learn more about the water treatment process and also the water cycle, and it was really great to see this facility firsthand. They, they do the whole range of recycled water use for landscape irrigation, all the way to drinking water capability. So I think it was very helpful for those on the tour to be able to see this particular aspect. And I think I have one or two more slides. At the Pure Water Monterey site, this was particularly of great interest to those who attended. You can see, this is just the demonstration site that we're in, and you get to see pictures on the wall and also various infographics explaining at each station how the water is purified at each step. I think this has very, been very helpful to the public. It was great for all these participants to see this. This particular demonstration site was built prior to their advanced water treatment facility. It's still in use today at the site, and it's used for media visits, tours like this, also schoolchildren, and people in the community are able to visit it. And I know that many other utilities around California and other nearby states, Oregon, Washington, and of course Nevada, have been visiting this particular site, which just came online, fully operational in 2019, just before the pandemic. So I, just lastly to wrap it up, and I'll turn it back over to Kim on my next slide here. I think that the opportunity for people on, on this planning commission and their staffs to be able to see these facilities firsthand and to talk to people who operate them and help build them is very valuable as we look to the One Water Nevada opportunities there for advanced treatment with A-plus water and what it might take us to, to overcome all the various hurdles that are in front of us moving forward there. I know there are many challenges, but as we learn from these visits, that's what all these facilities do, is learn how to overcome their challenges and move these projects forward. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kim.
Thank you, Mark. That was a great overview of the facility site visits, and if we could go to the next slide, I'll continue on with this presentation. I was going to say that I think everybody was drinking the water because we just made sure they didn't have any water before they got there, so they were super thirsty, but that would have been a really bad joke. I had tremendous feedback from all the participants. As Mark said, we had 22 participants during the last Northern Nevada Water, or Northern Nevada Water, Northern California trip to Monterey, and I kept getting feedback all along, and I wanted to memorialize that feedback. So I sent out a survey poll to the participants so that we could get some, some of this feedback in writing and build on that to make the trips better into the future. And of the 22 participants, 15 went, took the poll, and 15 of them were excited and energized by these trips and felt like they were completely satisfied with the overall experience, and so that was really good feedback to know that we had done a good job. The presentations, they thought, were extremely informative. They got a lot of information on, like Mark had indicated, there are very specific drivers to why some of the communities were looking to advance purified water as one of their innovative solutions to their water resource planning and portfolios. And so it was neat to hear, it was really educational to hear what those different drivers were and how they, what their source water was, how they went about their treatment processes, and the costs as well. So it was really informative. The facility that was the favorite was the Pure Monterey, Pure Water Monterey, which it was a really great facility. I just was kind of neglectful in asking, well, why was this your favorite facility? So I didn't get that feedback, so I apologize. I'll include that in the next poll. But the key thing was, is would you recommend the site visits to others? And all the feedback was, yes, please continue with these site visits, invite more staff and personnel and regulators and facility operators as we move towards these solutions in our region. Next slide. So some of the takeaways, I just took a few highlights. I also included the entire survey poll in your agenda packet, so you can read through that. The tours obviously generated a lot of excitement. A lot of people felt like we were on the right path. There was a huge emphasis in all the comments on continuing the public education process and engaging the public and getting them on board with the drivers in our community and that outreach and, and getting federal funding partners on board so that we can get these projects moving forward and off the ground. It was really, some felt it was really inspiring to learn about the facilities and their journeys, some of them, and these are not things that happen in a couple of years. These are sometimes a decade or two in the planning, and so to hear about that process and the challenges that they encountered, both politically and with the technical side of things, was really interesting. Facility planning goals, for some of them included this self-sufficiency, self-sufficiency, I just lost my train of thought, I apologize, aspect where they were looking at regenerating their own power or looking to recycle the water in, in various different ways so that they could be a self-reliant system and not have to get off the grid, so to, so to speak, or reduce their utility bills because the reverse osmosis is a very expensive process. Next slide. So this was our photo op moment, and this was at SoCal, Pure Water SoCal, and they had this really cute front office where they had a butterfly and water transformed, and our group had a lot of fun with doing a few selfies and photos here, so I had to highlight that at the end of this presentation, and put the directors up there for questions or comments and asked the commission members who were in attendance to maybe provide a few comments on, with, you know, their thoughts on the trip as well. So, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mark?
I have a comment, sir.
Yes.
Just to add on to what, what Mark has already said, all of that I fully support. We had a great time. We learned a lot, but we've also made some relationships that have already paid dividends. Dr. Megan Plumlee, for example, from Orange County Water, came up and was the keynote speaker at our recent Nevada Water Environment Association conference, and then Casey and I were able to have dinner with her and pick her brain, you know, get down in the weeds on some real invigorating membrane talk over some sushi. But we actually learned a lot. I mean, it was really geeky, I get it, so you know, it's not something that you would do with your family, but we had a really good time. But just being able to make that phone call, have that conversation with someone who spends, you know, 40 hours a week running the largest membrane system on the West Coast was extremely valuable. It is, not past tense, present tense, is extremely valuable. So that was a nice second-order, you know, benefit from this, these trips.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes.
Yeah, I would just say also, certainly they are beneficial. Mark, thank you for all your work in putting those together. It was good to have our electeds there for them to experience and to see those successes. It was good to have all of you here involved in that, and I wholeheartedly agree. We need to probably send more of our technical folks out there and make some more of those connections, as Michael mentioned, in some of these areas. It was just good to see how each of them have set it up and gives us ideas on how we want to do ours. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. I would just add along the lines of what Mike brought up is these utilities that have bottled water of their, of their advanced treated water have been. bottled water, their advanced treated water have been allowing us to use it for outreach in Reno area. Robert Charpentier has been getting it from Orange County Water District. And just recently, he and others were out at the Swift Project back east, and they are sending water as well to help us with our education and outreach with the public there in Reno. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Well, and thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 10. It's a presentation and report on the Truckee River Flood Management Authority Flood Project and Flood Warning System. Daniel Henderson.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do have a lot of slides, so I'll be going through these rather quickly. And thank you for having me. Next slide, please. Okay, this graphic is just to show us all that flooding is something that happens in our region often, on a frequent basis, and these are significant floods. And so I think it's certainly reasonable to say that our region is at risk of flooding. And these floods have the potential to cause damages in terms of economic damages and also potentially loss of life and threats to safety. Next slide, please. These are just some of the sort of, I guess, classic photos that we've probably all seen of the 1997 flood. This was our flood of record, and you can see it was quite extensive. And there were flood fighting activities throughout the watershed, but there were lots of damages incurred as a result of this flood. Next slide, please. This photo I thought was interesting. I hadn't really seen it before, and this is showing debris that's backed up behind Derby Dam. So again, the impacts from this flood were very widespread throughout the Truckee River. Next slide, please. Okay, so originally, the flood project was managed by Washoe County. That was up until 2011, when the Flood Management Authority was officially formed. And this was by an interlocal cooperative agreement between the cities and the county. We're currently governed by a Board of Directors, which includes members from Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County. We're funded by a 1/8 cent sales tax that's dedicated to public safety, and our mission is to create infrastructure and manage flood-related operations in our region. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go into detail on these. These are some of the large capital projects that our agency has completed over the years. And we've constructed these projects, helped fund these projects, and then in addition, we've purchased property, relocated businesses, and also demolished structures that were at risk of flooding. Next slide, please. What I'd like to focus on in this brief presentation is some of our current work. Right now, our agency is very focused on the Vista Narrows Flood Plane Terracing Project. This is sort of the keystone to the entire flood project as currently designed. And I'll talk more about that in a few slides. We're also developing some conceptual designs for our new Meadows Project. It's kind of an update of the Meadows Project that we're all familiar with. We've been managing the physical map revision effort, and in fact, we just submitted a package to FEMA for review. So we're very excited to sort of kick off this probably two-year process of review to update all of the flood maps for this region. We have our home elevation program, and this is funded with money from our agency that's matched with money from FEMA. And so those houses are being elevated in batches according to the FEMA funding. We also operate and maintain the flood warning system, and we coordinate with regional emergency managers. I do have some slides on that in a moment. We've got ongoing property management, which includes security and cleanup of those properties. And we're actually in the process of overhauling our agency's website to make it much more user-friendly. And we're planning on relaunching that in May of this year. Next slide, please. Okay, so I just kind of want to jump to this new Meadows Project conceptual design. And really, the takeaway here, I don't expect you all to read all of this. The takeaway here is that in talking with property owners and stakeholders in the Meadows and after doing some value engineering, we're making a shift and we're prioritizing building levees and berms rather than flood walls because the levees and berms are more cost-effective and over the long run, they're easier to maintain. And it's a solution that is supported by property owners and stakeholders because of how it would allow the land to be used afterward, after construction. And the other thing that we're doing is really focusing on what I would call green infrastructure. We are planning on excavating floodplain terraces. And in the place, the Millan McCarron property, we are hoping to realign the river channel. And this is to not only improve flood storage capacity and conveyance, but also enhance habitat for fish and wildlife and create this amenity for the community. So that's always been something that we have had as a goal, but we're really moving forward with that. And again, taking a close look at the conceptual designs from before and sort of reworking those based on the information and the technology that we have available today and the needs of our community. It's important to note that all of these new elements will have the same or better hydraulic properties to manage the downstream impacts of the project. Next slide, please. And again, this is just a graphic, proposed construction schedule. I just kind of want you to see how the entire project might be phased and constructed over time. Again, right now, we're focusing on Vista Narrows. That's at the downstream end of this particular graphic. And what's linked to the Vista Narrows is the berm at Grand Sierra Resort, as well as the berm at the Reno Tahoe Airport. And this is because what we're hoping to do, if everything works out, is to use the material that's excavated from the Vista Narrows Project as fill for creating the berms at GSR and the airport. And so those projects would be closely coordinated, and that would result in large cost savings. We would then move on to the Tamoa Levy and possibly extending the Rock Boulevard Levy. And from there, we would focus on the Millan McCarron property. This would be an intensive effort, again, hoping to realign the channels so that we can have more floodplain available. And then we would move on to the Sparks North Levy and floodwall. And the sequencing here is proposed so that we are creating flood storage and improving conveyance before we start creating barriers to floodwaters. And the idea is that we don't want to push the water somewhere inadvertently and cause damage while we're in the process of constructing the whole project. Next slide, please. And I just want to briefly mention, again, the benefits of this project. So if you look at the entire sort of colorful area here on this slide, I mean, that is the 100-year floodplain. That's what floods in our community. The red areas in this particular graphic will be removed from the flood zone after our project is fully built out. So you can see, that's quite a large area. The blue areas are existing, as I mentioned, and they would continue to be future floodzones. However, there is a chance that the depth of flooding might be decreased slightly, so that would result in some benefit there. But really and truly, the economic benefit of this project is that the flood impacts from a 1997-type flood event could be reduced by as much as $2 billion by taking all of those properties out of the flood zone. And that's based on some studies that were done in 2018, I believe, so those dollars would be even larger today. Next slide, please. Okay, so very briefly, the Vista Narrows Flood Plane Terracing Project. We've got three terraces. Some of them are constrained because we're in kind of a narrow section of the canyon there. But basically, we are proposing river terracing. There's a real emphasis on environmental benefits and revegetating this area and using that floodplain to create storage and convey water. Later on, there would be a portion of the project that would include a levy and a floodwall, and that's around the area of Sparks. Again, those are later projects that are part of that overall Meadows Project I mentioned. The key here is really to balance the flood protection benefits in the Meadows with the downstream impacts. So only building what we need in order to make our project function properly and trying to really minimize those downstream impacts. Next slide, please. And this is just an artist's rendering of what the largest terrace might look like. This is Terrace Six, I believe. And you can see, we're actually, the project would actually create 13 acres of wetlands and some riparian canopy to shade the river, and it would transition into a dry meadow and then reclaimed uplands. And so it will require a lot of management of weeds, and we're committed to making sure the revegetation is successful over time. Next slide, please. Okay, so where are we at with this project and where are we headed? We completed 65% designs and also a very comprehensive downstream effects study in 2019. We've used that documentation to begin the environmental permitting process with the regulatory agencies. We're actually working with Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe to address those downstream impacts. And in particular, we are hoping to establish a mitigation fund that the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe could manage for restoration and flood-related projects that would benefit the tribe and be prioritized by the tribe. We've also been moving forward recently with design for replacing the Bridge Street Pedestrian Bridge. This is near Wadsworth. And we identified this as an issue hydraulically when we performed some breakout analyses as part of these downstream effects studies. And our board was excited to move forward with this, and so we're working on that. We're also working with folks from Rainbow Bend on possible solutions for their neighborhood streets. And again, we're hoping to start construction of this project in 2024. Next slide. Okay, that was a whirlwind of that. I'll give you a very brief overview of our flood warning system, Gage Network. Next slide, please. Okay, importance of gauging. What we're essentially trying to do here is get accurate forecasts so that we can enable our decision-makers to issue these early warnings and help our community prepare for potential flood emergencies. The more time you have, the better prepared you can be. Next slide, please. Our system has three main components. We have gauge equipment in the field. This is a stream flow, precipitation, and also weather stations. We also have communication equipment in the field. These are transmitters, mountaintop repeaters, antenna, those types of things. And then we've got software and databases for storing the data and also accessing it via the web. Next slide, please. So TRIFMA took over management of the flood warning system network in 2010, and this was following reorganization at Water Resources, Washoe County. I will note, the program had been going on since the mid-'80s, so it's been established for a long time. We currently operate and maintain a series of stream flow and precipitation gauges in cooperation with the U.S. Geological Survey. We also provide technical assistance to emergency managers at the Regional Emergency Operations Center during flood events, and we periodically update the flood warning plan. Next slide. Okay, so as I mentioned, we are tasked with implementing the flood warning plan, and this involves coordinating with everyone on activating the Regional Emergency Operations Center and also that emergency management during floods. We also use the data to develop and calibrate our hydraulic and hydrologic models, and those have been used to inform the design of our project. We develop flood inundation maps for regional emergency managers, and we also archive the data for future studies. Next slide, please. Okay, very briefly, this is just one of the sort of data products that we look at. This is a River Forecast Center forecast, and it shows the flood warning plan triggers. So on the blue side, you've got the observed, green is the forecast, and pink is moving into like a longer-range forecast. And you can see, we've got the thresholds there in yellow and red, monitoring stage and alert stage, a flood stage. And so as you start looking at these graphs, you can work with the other emergency managers and start making these judgment calls on when we might encounter a flood emergency and what steps could be done to prepare for this. Next slide, please. This is just a page from our flood warning plan. Again, we are going to be updating this very soon. I just wanted to show this so that you can see, we've got the caution alert, monitoring alert, a full-blown flood alert. These are based on thresholds at the Vista Gauge for stage and flow. Next slide, please. I mentioned earlier that we provide tools for emergency managers. This is a graphic that we created based on a flood simulation during the January 2017 flood events. And so we used forecast data, we ran it through our models, and we came up with this graphic, which we distributed to emergency managers. And it was actually a really helpful tool at the time. You know, when you sort of zoom into this graphic, you can start to figure out what roads might be flooded versus what roads might be available for emergency response routes. You could figure out if flooding was going to be an issue and certain areas would need to be evacuated versus areas where you could set up an evacuation center, right? Because it would be out of a flooded area. You know, do you need to move materials or equipment out of the way or to certain places for floodfighting? So it was a really useful tool, and we are in the process of updating these maps and will be providing this information to emergency managers very soon for use in future flood events. Next slide, please. Okay, I just want to briefly acknowledge that we do not do this all by ourselves. We have a very great partner, network, and stakeholders that help us do this work. So that's a thanks to everybody. Next slide. Okay, so where are we right now and what are we doing? We're evaluating the existing network and developing recommendations for the future. These recommendations are going to be based on the current cooperative agreements, our priorities, the needs of our partners, and also our understanding of the program. A written report on this is forthcoming, and once it is done, it'll be available to the public. So we'll share that on our website and such. And next slide. Okay, and this is just kind of a sneak peek of some of the things that we've been working on. We are working with the USGS to add some gauges to our cooperative cost-share network, including the Steamboat Creek Precip Gauge, which actually washed out very recently. So we're going to get that back online. We've also been working with the GS and Tamoa on the Whites Creek Gauge, which also washed out. And so we're working with them to reestablish the gauge and then eventually transfer that over to Tamoa at their request. We're planning on moving our radio antenna and equipment to our building. Right now, it's at the Washoe County Radio Shop sometime this spring. And we're also considering switching over some sites from these mountaintop repeaters to either cell signals or GO satellite, which would go through the USGS. So we've got some things in the works, and again, these will be put into the report. So with that, next slide. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we have more presentations coming, and I will say, we've done some very detailed presentations on these topics. I have slide presentations, and I have audio transcriptions from some presentations that we did on the Gage Network and also on the New Meadows Project and Vista. So I'm happy to give those links to Birgit and Kim and Jen to share with you. I'm also always available if you would like to talk offline or come by the office. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson, and that's a, warmed my heart to see all this activity in the last thirty-some years. Are there any questions?
So then you'll just want to show appreciation for the work that's gone in, especially on this forecasting and the stream flow gauges. You know, it's one of those things you kind of forget about when you don't need it, and then when you need it, you're really glad that you have it. So just thank you for the report and for the good work there, and those inundation maps really did come in handy in two thousand and seventeen. It was a new tool for us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Good comments. I'll see no other questions, and we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, the presentation and report on the One Truckee River Project. It's up to you, Birgit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Birgit Whitaker for the record, and I'm honored to be introducing One Truckee River and Iris Jaylee Papard. And I just wanted to give a very brief background. In two thousand and thirteen, Nevada Land Trust and Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful brought together one hundred and thirty stakeholder groups, agencies, nonprofits, and other groups, and several commissioners on the board today were involved in that effort back then. And we were tasked with basically putting together the One Truckee River Management Plan that ranged from very complex issues from social issues, public safety, to water quality, and those are just a couple that I'm mentioning. In two thousand and sixteen, Washoe County, City of Sparks in Reno, and the WRWC all adopted this plan, which has produced some pretty remarkable results, in my humble opinion. I've been involved the whole time, so maybe it's not so humble. But we brought Iris on board, and that was a great thing to do because she's going to present the accomplishments from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two. So with that, Iris Jaylee Papard.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today, Commissioners, and Iris Jaylee Papard for the record. And next slide, please. At the core of what we do, One Truckee River is a nonprofit that manages a watershed coalition, a partnership of public and private entities working together in our mission, that is to ensure a healthy and thriving Truckee River connected to the community. Next slide, please. Some of our accomplishments in the last two years have been our water trail work focused on inter-agency coordination and fundraising for public facilities, river access, and signage improvements for paddlers and pedestrians. Together, we have installed over two hundred and fifty interpretive signs that include maps, directions, and ways to care for the Truckee River. Next slide. We have purchased three loos that are being installed in the city of Reno, one installed at Broadhead Park in two thousand and twenty, another with a grand opening that just happened on March sixteenth, and a third scheduled for City Plaza in two thousand and twenty-four. Through this work, we partner with local human service nonprofits to support the success of the loos. Next. We have started a regional coordinated vegetation management effort to improve the ecological function of the river system. We have an active technical working group representing sixteen local agencies with authority or involvement in vegetation management along the river that has completed a framework vegetation management and restoration plan. We look forward to developing pilot projects that are elements of the plan. This spring, we'll be coordinating and conducting an overall conditions assessment for the river from Crystal Peak Park to Vista Narrows and coordinating and continuing the coordination of that technical working group. Next slide, please. We have completed thirty percent design, reaching our milestone one for a restoration project at Broadhead Park. Next slide. We have received technical support from National Park Service that has led to a grant from River Network to support a process of engaging local community members in river stewardship and improvements. Next slide, please. One Truckee River completed a strategic communication plan that details out One Truckee River's story, why we are important, and our target audiences and messages, and communication platforms and goals. Next slide, please. We have developed a Truckee River dashboard through continual environment with our partners and collaboration with Truckee Meadows Tomorrow to create a way to measure our success. Currently, we're at the last stages of this project, working with Desert Research Institute to assist us through the water quality indicators. Next slide, please. With the support of Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission and Western Regional Water Commission, we have developed a river-friendly living program, working together to love the Truckee River. The program is divided into four branches, individual actions, yards, neighborhoods, and voices in hands. The program is focused on adult education to reduce non-point pollution to the river. Overall branding research and facilitated focus groups informed the development of the program branding. In two thousand and twenty-two, with over two hundred and fifty posts published, we informed the development, oh, I'm sorry, skip to the line there. So with our social media, we reached close to two hundred thousand people with messages on how to care for the Truckee River. We hosted well-attended workshops with over two hundred participants, with ninety-three percent of them reporting improved knowledge. Four, four workshops were held in collaboration with the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee to fifty-five homeowner association managers, and we developed video resources on our website to allow anyone, anytime, to view the information. We just received a grant from Nevada Division of Environmental Protection to develop a river-friendly demonstration garden at Lake Park in collaboration with the city of Reno and the local neighborhood. Next slide, please. We have increased, we have expanded our partnership council now to include thirty-one representatives from twenty-two local agencies that meet quarterly and have developed an oversight committee that is exploring how to leverage local funding to increase federal funding for the Truckee River. Next slide. We have increased the internal capacity of One Truckee River through the development of a powerful Salesforce nonprofit success PAC database. On the screen is our homepage showing data from our fund report, active contracts and grants, where we are with our donation goal, our income divided by source and purpose, current grants and contracts, and our partnership council attendance. And also, to the right, are my texts related to fundraising and partner engagement. And back to the fund report, if we were here active with it and pushing on prospecting. Next slide, please. You see that you enter into those details, and then the next slide, you go on to those, you push on there, and then you see the opportunities also with going into the system in that way. So it just is a very powerful system for us to organizing, organizing all of our partner engagements and fundraising activities. Next slide. Also with funding and support from this commission, we have spent a lot of time looking at different funding opportunities for the Truckee River, and we've developed this master fund directory that's identifying over forty funding opportunities. And we look forward to looking into these in more detail and have already picked out some to apply for this year and for two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide. And then this is the funding opportunities divided out by our projects that did evolve out of our prioritized action items, and so we can get a understanding of what funding opportunities are out there. Next slide. And this is a list of our current funders to date, and I want to thank you again for, as you guys are one of them. Okay, next slide. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Quite a bit of information. Are there any questions for Iris? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
It's a lot of information again. Next item, Agenda Item Twelve is a presentation report regarding progress and status of the Desert Research Institute Rain Gauge Network and Washoe Evaporation, Evapotranspiration Projects. Greg McCurdy?
Yes, thank you.
I, I did not put my name on there, but I should give him an introduction, so if you don't mind, I'd just like to introduce Greg McCurdy. He's an associate research scientist in climatology at the Desert Research Institute, and Mr. McCurdy has been with DRI's Department of Atmospheric Sciences since nineteen ninety-four. His background includes deployment installation of weather and research instrumentation, and Greg has extensive experience in this field and has spent significant time in remote regions of Nevada gathering this data. He is the primary researcher for DRI's precipitation gauge and Washoe County evaporation, evapotranspiration. I don't know why I can never get that word right. It's a tongue twister for me. Projects for the Western Regional Water Commission, in which he will be presenting now. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity to present to you, Commissioner, and look forward to the, any questions and things that you might have for us. This is Pam Lacy. She's one of our staff members. She helps me with a lot of things, and as Kim kind of mentioned, I spend a lot of time in the field doing data collection. And when I am back in the office, it's often doing data analysis and running computer models and making sure that the stuff is posted up where people can get to it. Next slide, please. What we're going to look at here is just very briefly, an overview of these two projects, the County Rain Gauge Project and the Washoe Evapotranspiration Project. The points I'd like to touch on here is the data that is being collected, how and where it's being collected from, and the application of the data, what's being done with it at this point. And honestly, the things that I'm going to kind of highlight here are just very minimally touching those things. Next slide, please. This is a kind of an overview of the areas that these two projects cover. You can see the one on the left, the Evapotranspiration or the ET project. ET is often a lot easier to say than Evapotranspiration. Covers the Greater Truckee Meadows metro area. So you can see we've got a station down in the south extent of this in Washoe Valley. There, in fact, there were four stations that originally were begun in this network that were established as part of a project with the County Extension Service. And the most northern stations that, up in Cold Springs, Lemon Valley, and at the Lazy Five Regional Park, were added in recent years. That's the spatial coverage of the ET project at this point. The project on the right, the Rain Gauge Project, you can see that actually covers, might be a little difficult to tell, but it actually extends pretty much through all of Washoe County from Reno north. So it covers up in through Smoke Creek, Duck Lake Valley, and then also out into the North Valleys, Bedell Flat, Dry Valley, and Antelope Valley as well. Some of the things that these projects are used for, you can kind of see, kind of listed here, is particularly ET project is to provide homeowners consumptive use estimates or numbers that are actually in their communities. That's why these communities were selected and where they are located. The stations that were deployed were put out looking very specifically at their exposure and how they would represent that community. For the Rain Gauge Project, that actually began as part of a county project that was begun by Wyn Ross, if I remember right.
Yes.
Quite some time ago. And once Wyn retired, then Chris actually asked us if we would be willing to take upon the, us, the task of measuring those gauges and continuing on with that. I'll highlight here in a few things, some of the other things where this has changed, but you can see listed there, some of the uses for this data. We've actually had several occasions where the data from those rain gauges have been requested in conjunction with some of the flooding in Lemon Valley in particular, as they have then tried to understand better with their models as to just exactly what impacts were caused in Lemon Valley. Next slide, please. First, for the ET project, what it consists of is each of these sites, and this is a photo representing one of those sites, this one in particular is actually out in Mogul, but at those stations, we collect air temperature, humidity, wind speed and direction, solar radiation, and precipitation. This data is reported to us at DRI every ten minutes, and you can actually find there, the bottom is the webpage where you can actually go on and see where that is updated every ten minutes. There are occasional communications outages. We are taking advantage at this point of communication through the county network, so we don't have ongoing overhead costs associated with that. And the good thing with that is that the county is actually supporting the relay of that data, and so I don't have to worry about other relays and other sites where you have to connect in through with that data. Most of our relays through that are at nearby fire stations or at some of the other county facilities. As you can see, the, whereas, we did pay very specific attention to try and make sure that the upwind areas were unobstructed as much as possible and did represent a good fetch for the exposure for the station. Next slide, please. After looking through this presentation, there's just a little brief side here, I probably should have set this up as the two projects, but I thought I'd kind of focus on the what fours for each project and then what's done with each project. So here is the Rain Gauge Network. It's, what it is, is consists of about eighty of these little canisters. They're actually a four-inch pipe that has a cap on the bottom end of it, and they are at all the various locations you saw on the earlier map. In fact, you can kind of see off to the very right in the photo there is one of the recharge bottles. So what we do is twice a year, go out and take measurements at particular times of either when the gauge is starting to get full or when it's to prepare for an upcoming good year like this last year. We'll empty those out into a container, bring that waste material back, and dispose of it. Again, the best way for obtaining this data is to actually contact me, and we'll give you the data in several forms, typically in a spreadsheet. We're also working, we started working with the county in late two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, to actually get this data posted on the county website. COVID put a little bit of a hitch in that, so we're still working on that one part. Next slide, please. For the ET project, here's an example of one of the plots that can be obtained from the website. This is just an annual period. What you can kind of see here, this is for the UNR Campus Station. You can see the red bars that are represented on the top graph is the daily temperature highs and lows. The black line in the center is the daily average, so you can see the variation throughout the season. Behind those are the, in the pastel colors, the kind of red, green, and blue, are the period of record highs and lows for the temperature. So you can kind of get an idea of what the temperature range is and then what the record has been measured at this station. This station originally went in in nineteen ninety-nine, so it has a good twenty-plus year record, running on twenty-four years. The bottom graph, what you see there is in the red bars are the rain events by day, the day, daily total. The black line you can see is the cumulative total precipitation through the year. The green pastel color behind it is the period of record from that gauge and its average. So it's, it puts in context that the, this year of data here, yeah, we well exceeded measured precipitation at this site. Now, while these are the only two items that you can see for this one on this presentation, you can actually do this very same thing for the other quantities that are measured at the, at the station. The humidity, the wind speed, wind direction, solar radiation, as well as the evapotranspiration that is computed from that data at the station. One thing to kind of note with that is that the data that is from this station is a PET or a potential evapotranspiration, so it is not meant to be the actual evapotranspiration from the location. And that is because to measure actually evapotranspiration at these sites would be very focused at that location and difficult to then distribute to other locations and really make it interpretive. If you've got more questions on that later, I can get into that as well. Next page, please. Here's what some of the applications that we've done with the Rain Gauge Project. This is actually some comparisons because the, what we had originally started to do was some of the interest once we took over, was kind of getting an idea of, well, is there value in continuing to make these measurements? Most of these areas in the north part of the county, that's coverage of data acquisition is very limited. There are a couple of snowtell stations in the upper extents of some of the watersheds, but almost nothing within the county. There are some ROS stations that are scattered throughout the county, but those stations are primarily for fire application, and so the precipitation they measure in the wintertime is very suspicious at best. So we took the data that goes into the PRISM model and started comparing it with what we were getting out of some of the rain gauges. And so you can kind of see here a little bit of the information that that is giving with the maps. So the map in each of these sets on the left is from the PRISM data, and you can kind of see from those that it basically shows very little variation across these watersheds. see from those that it basically shows very little variation across these watersheds. We're finding from the data from the rain gauges, that is not the case. Now, at the same time, in 2017, a lot of the, this information was presented to the commission. If there's interest in that, I'm sure we can pull that up. But probably the best place for this information for this project is pulled from a paper that, yeah, paper that was published and is on the county website as well as on DRI's website, that is the Rain Gauge Analysis Project Historical Analysis and Comparison. And in fact, I've got a copy on my shelf, so I got, well, I'll just Google it. So I did, and yep, both of them came up for both county as well as the DRI site. One of the other things that we've kind of found too is that in a lot of the models, the distribution of precipitation that falls across the county going east to west is, much like what PRISM is showing here, they end up kind of attributing it to very flat, very little variation from going east to west. Whereas what we're finding from the Rain Gauge Network is that there are events, especially from, I'm still working on the current year, but previous year, there was quite a significant difference between what precipitation fell in the west part of the county in the valleys just north of Reno versus what fell in the eastern part of the counties. Which, of course, that then shows impact because a lot of the valleys north of Cold Springs aren't very populated, so there aren't very many measurements there. But we also did find even going from Cold Springs across through to Lemon Valley, Lazy Five, and then on up the flanks of Virginia, to Virginia Peak, it very much, as you went across until you hit Virginia Peak, it dropped off. It was not as flat as what a lot of the models often present. Anyway, I'll let you kind of dig into that and more information. Those are some of the kind of types of things we're finding. Next slide, please. Our conclusion for the continuation of these two projects is, first off, both projects are starting to develop some very good historical data, periods of records. We are seeing some changes, and of course, there is growth in the county, and that is going to be impacted by these. The Rain Gauge Network in particular is out in areas that are extremely unpopulated. But I've even noticed myself, as I continue out in some of the North Valleys, I'm surprised at the number of, I'll call them dwellings, that are popping up in some of those areas that I hadn't seen before. So undoubtedly, there is going to be pressure put on some of those north areas, Smoke Creek, Duck Valley, Smoke Creek and Buffalo Creek and those other areas as future comes. But also, those are areas of water resources, too. So anyway, there are a number of things here that this does provide both of these networks for data. One of the things I didn't mention is that the ET project, those eight stations that are scattered around the Greater Truckee Meadows area, we actually do also forward that data to the National Weather Service every 10 minutes as well as we receive that data. So it gets into their models and is used for their forecasts as well. So this data is being used for a number of purposes. So we've often had questions in the past of what our web hits are seeing on our website, and I would say they're not unsurprisingly not low, but at the same time, I think they are still a heavy underestimate because I know the data is also available in places like Mezzal West, Synoptic, NOAA, at Boulder, they have the data as well, and I know they distribute it, and we're often hearing from them. In fact, while I haven't heard, well, I do occasionally from the Weather Service here, but with some of the networks, stuff we often get, it's not unusual, I get requests of like, hey, station so-and-so quit last week, what's up? Anyway, so the data that is being collected by both these networks has been very heavily used and is very helpful in a lot of aspects. Next slide. That's our presentation and a very brief overview of what these projects do and have done, and I would now ask other questions.
Thank you, Greg. There any questions from the Commissioners? None, I'll just remind everyone that regardless of your expertise on this board, everything that you are involved with begins with precipitation. So having said that, I think that might, you know, add a little enthusiasm about these projects. With that, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike. This is John Enlow, Mike. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
No, very good presentation and very valuable information. I appreciate it. This is kind of a strange question, but do the precipitation gauges have an issue with trapping birds?
Very good question. Yes. With the rain gauges that we have out for the storage gauges, we actually, in the springtime, I'll put a little screen over the top of them to keep out bugs, debris, and other things from the summertime. And of course, because it snows, and snow will accumulate on those screens, I remove those in the fall, during the fall visit. Our other gauges that are out with the ET project, yeah, they, I've found a couple of those. I haven't had such a problem with ones here in Truckee Meadows. Well, we have had a little. The birds tend to like to use those either as urinals or as a great place for a start for a nest. And so, yeah, we do visit those periodically and clean out any debris that we find in those, and so that, those kind of things do impact those. Yes, thanks for the question.
Thanks, John. I operated some gauges myself for quite a while. Never really had any problems with insects or birds, but doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13, Program Manager's Report. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman. Kim Rigdon for the record. So this one will be quite brief. There should be a slide coming up here. You received a lot of project updates today, and I plan to bring more to you in June, primarily focused on the One Water Nevada projects. So I don't have any other significant project updates for you today as far as the item A in your, in your agenda packet there. For the Revenue and Expenses Report, I changed that in January to reflect a quarterly approach. And so I just, I summarized on the slide the cumulative to-date revenue and expenditures and balances. And so we've brought in about 1.5 million in revenue through the third quarter. We've had about 914,000, 915,000 in expenditures. And so we, just based on our revenues and expenses through the third quarter, we're doing pretty good with 606,000 in our balance. So I don't have any other significant items to report on that, but if you have any questions on those reports, I'd be happy to take them.
Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 14, Discussion Regarding Location and Possible Agenda Items for the Upcoming NWC Meeting. Kim?
Thank you, Chairman. Kim Rigdon for the record. I am, I was going to present to the board a question to see if it would be okay if we did not hold a May meeting. I do have some family plans scheduled for that week in May. There are no time-sensitive items for that meeting, so if the board is okay with that, we would reconvene on June 7. And I have a few scheduled agenda items. Like I said in the last item discussion, we'll have the presentations on the One Water Nevada projects. We will be bringing forward the public-at-large member resumes for you to take a look at and make a recommendation to the WRWC on that appointment. And we have four so far, so we haven't had to do any scoring or filtering through those. We don't have any currently fiscal year 24 agreements or amendments that I would need to bring forward. If we do get any additional scopes of work, which we're anticipating on some of the projects, I'll bring those forward for approval at that time and recommendation to the WRWC for the next fiscal year. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Commission for any requests for that board meeting.
Therefore, we would meet next on June 7. Commissioners, do you have any comments, thoughts about that? Seeing none, it's there, since this is a action item, I believe.
That's up to the board.
Essentially to postpone the May meeting.
Yeah.
You don't actually need to take action on this unless there's an objection. If somebody wants to hold that meeting, we could take that up, but otherwise, we could just defer to this.
Okay. Any public comment on that? With that, well, then, we won't take any action. And item 15, Commission Comments. Seeing none. Staff comments?
No, no comments from staff.
No comments. So at this point, I think we'll adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, can I unadjourn? Are there any public comments whatsoever? None. All right, now we can adjourn.